I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can stand and say. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We do have some visitors signed in wishing to speak. Mr. Costelli, could you remind us of the speaking?
Anybody that comes to a meeting and signs in at that meeting is allowed three minutes.
Perfect. So we have Mr. Jack Powers first.
Hi, my name is Jack Powers. I'm here on behalf of the Amherst Swim Community. I've been swimming at the middle school pool for about six years now, both with an outside-of-school club and with the school's varsity team. And I'd like to just take a moment and talk about why I think this district needs a new pool. I think when I say this, some people might immediately think that the school, the swimming community, is too small to warrant the construction of a new pool. But I think while this might have been true in years past, it's really not as strong of a claim now. On my teams, I've seen very dramatic increase in the amount of kids who want to learn how to swim. And this is great, even if it does mean we have to crowd our lanes in the pool a bit. Because I, excuse me. By installing a pool, we would be able to facilitate the growth of the swim community. And why wouldn't we want to do that? Swimming is a life skill, after all, and knowing how to save float can literally save your life. I mean, drowning kills about 4,000 Americans each year, which means that statistically speaking, 11 people have drowned today. By building a new pool and allowing the swim community to grow, we could teach more kids how to swim and do our part to lower that number. And in that respect, though, we would make the community safer for everyone. And there's also something about this sport that I don't think much people realize, and that's like the social aspect. There's something about this sport that creates a camaraderie that you cannot find in any other team. My experience on the varsity team has allowed me to make more friends and form bonds that I otherwise really would not have made. I wish that more people could have this experience, and I think that a new pool would be the way to do it. If the board were to approve the construction of a new pool, you would give the gift of swimming to more members of the community, and this is a gift that I think everyone should have. I ask that you keep this in mind when you make decisions moving forward.
Thank you. And Kevin Powers.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin Powers. I'm related to Jack. And I'm also here to call attention to what I believe is the need for significant improvements to the Amherst District pool facilities. My wife and I are parents of three kids here in the district. We love it. And so I'm here to support Jack and also our swim families. As we all know, this past year, Amherst voters approved a capital project that includes many important improvements, and that's awesome. It's great. But unfortunately, an upgraded pool and aquatic center was left off of this most recent set of capital projects. As a parent, I believe this was a missed opportunity. I also believe that our district can and should ensure that the next capital project includes plans for major upgrades to the pool facilities currently located here in the middle school. There are a lot of reasons to invest in the district's aquatic facilities. As a parent of a varsity swimmer, Jack, I can assure you that Amherst pool facilities are the most antiquated facilities that we visit during the course of the swim season here in Western New York. We, as a district, rightly pride ourselves on the quality of educational spaces that we offer to students and families. But our pool facilities are literally from a bygone era. The middle school pool was built 60 years ago. This matters because our facilities badly underserve our swimmers, a diverse group of hard-working and successful student athletes who deserve every bit as much support as Amherst athletes in any other sport. The competitive space is not large enough for us to host meets with more than one team or to incorporate diving into the meets that do take place here. There's almost no spectator space for family or friends to gather to cheer on their student athletes. Finally, the desirability of upgraded aquatic facilities goes beyond just the students who participate on the swim teams. Swimming is simultaneously an important life skill and a recreational activity that is emotionally and physically rewarding, personally restorative, and community-building. An upgraded and expanded aquatic center would help to ensure that every Amherst student, K through 12, has access to a safe place to learn how to swim and to develop a lifelong love and appreciation of the water. I know that we here in Amherst Central Schools work hard to anticipate and then to meet the needs of all of our students and families. Investing in pool improvements would be a logical and worthwhile continuation of that longstanding Amherst practice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to report of boarding committees. Have we had any meetings since the last meeting? No. We do have to, I guess, discuss our exit poll that we've tradition, you know, we've done but taken a break from since COVID. Did we do, oh yeah, we did do it last year. Do we want to make any changes to it? It was in the update.
I did provide everybody.
Want to do the same one? Obviously, we use that, the responses on it, you know, we see the trends when we make decisions such as capital projects and programs and what have you.
I think that, Tony, could you share the feedback about what has changed since we started this? Basically, nothing, right?
Well, yeah, the tool, I mean, the tool has been the same as the survey tool, which is beneficial to look at trend data, but the data has not changed. So every year, the results are very similar. So I don't know how informative it is if we're getting the information we're looking for. But we get consistently similar results, which I guess is a good trend for us that we've identified. But as far as the practicality of the information, I'm not sure that it's there.
I don't want to take it all the time, but my thought is that, so we did this to try to get feedback, you know, and we wanted to find out how people felt about the district, what the, you know, issues were. And we did do that, like, and now, so we've, but we've been getting the same information for all the years we've been doing it, since we started it. And I think that the point of it was to get feedback. And I was thinking that a better way to do it might be, because it's also a small subsector of the population in the district. You know, the numbers are, what, let's call it 900 people out of, you know, however many thousands we have. So I was thinking that another way to do it might be is we have a dedicated email that's like feedback@amherstschools.org, and we put that out there. And that's the place where if people have, you know, and then if all of a sudden we start getting a bunch of emails about one topic, then we know that that's what people are thinking about, you know? And then it would be out there for, if we, if we publicized it well enough, it would be out there, and people could give us the feedback we were looking for. And it wouldn't necessarily just be the people who walked through the door and went to the polls. You know what I'm saying? So I don't know, but that was just my alternative idea, if we feel like this is stale, you know?
I like the idea. This is an anecdote, the powers that are present here tonight. How my other parents feel that way, well, they have to say it. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think regardless of whether it takes place of the exit poll or not, I mean, that's a great thing to have. You know, maybe we do the exit poll every other year, you know, just to make sure we're capturing the voters at some point in time, you know? But if it's not giving us, you know, do we put the effort in every year? Do we put every three years? But I do like that idea, you know? There's a lot of districts who do, like, community forums and, you know, different ways to gather feedback.
We have a community forum every other Tuesday. Right, right now. Look who's here.
Is everybody okay if we scrap it for this year and then do Jean's suggestion?
I'm fine, yeah.
Let's do it.
Do we want to have the intention to just decide each year, then? Is that the idea? Like, next year, we'll see.
We'll just look at it again next year at this time.
Because that's something, I think it would be a good idea to have it in the budget newsletter, because that actually goes to all the households in the district and not just households with children in the schools. So we could put it in there.
And we have a PR person who can write something up about that, you know, new communication method.
But the other thing is, this year, aren't we switching to, like, iPads for check-in and stuff, too? So it might lessen the confusion around this election anyway. So give them a year off on this part, we're, you know.
I'm going to turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Right. Well, I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Pigeon and his team from the high school for two presentations. He has the Students and Teachers of the Month for the Pathfinder Task Force, and he's also going to provide you with an update on the high school and his action-planning team's work. Welcome.
Thank you very much. High school doubleheader, so here we go. Always a great opportunity to shine a spotlight on the wonderful students and staff at Amherst Central High School. Our Student of the Month and Teachers of the Month for January, starting with our student, Aaron Ashak, a wonderful student, very hardworking, was nominated by a fellow student above his kindness in class, and how helpful he is in class, and what a great friend he is. He's also very active in school, volunteers in different committees, in different events. He's been one of my enemy club members for many, many years, and active in a number of endeavors within the building and very active in the art program as well, so great student. Congratulations, Aaron. And we also had Ray Tatora, who was camera shy. He didn't want his picture taken. But I was very glad he was nominated, extremely shy child, but extremely high-performing, was nominated by one of his teachers, very strong academic excellence, as well as, although he's shy, very, a bunch of contributor in the classroom. And he's overcome a lot. We won't get into that. But to achieve at his level and to overcome what he has overcome is quite remarkable and continues to achieve and grow and doing very, very well. So we're very honored to give him that recognition. Teachers, Ms. Skelzo, our counselor, was nominated, and a little bit of a tear-jerker of a nomination from one of her senior boys, believe it or not, about the difference that she has made in his journey through high school, starting from that unsure freshman all the way to his college aspirations and transitions. So he wrote that up very nicely, and I've gotten a number of nominations for Ms. Skelzo, large and small, over the past 12 months. So she's doing a wonderful job, and it was great to honor her. A new face to Amherst, Mr. Doug Paschley, our new art teacher that took over for Mr. Amherst, doing a wonderful job in many, many different realms. He was nominated by Mr. Pomitlyrs for just an enormous amount of work he did with his students related to the operetta poster this year. In the operetta program, Mr. Pomitlyrs had mentioned that normally they get three or four submissions. This year, Mr. Paschley's students submitted 40 different renderings of the operetta poster. He also mentioned that Mr. Paschley's quite the tech wizard and a graphic artist as well. So he really bolstered the t-shirt this year, the sweatshirt, and the poster with some of his graphic skills. So he's very grateful and was very thrilled in the enthusiasm that Mr. Paschley showed already for the operetta. That was a nice nomination. Moving on to February. February, we had Teagan Casello, staying with that operetta theme. Teagan was the honorary for the operetta poster, really did a very, very nice job. She was also nominated just for being a great fellow student, and the teacher that nominated her recognized just her being all-around active, especially this year in very heartfelt ways in terms of she's been on the unified bowling team, helping her classmates in that regard. And our buddy ASL, American Sign Language Club, that has been extremely active this year and did a number of wonderful acts of kindness. He mentioned she spearheaded the holiday card campaign in St. Mary's School for the Dead. So she really did some nice work this year, so congratulations to Teagan. We also have Jayden Serotti. Jayden is a senior, a very high-performing student academically, all-around nice guy tiger, kind of like the boy next door, really nice young man, great player on our basketball team, and is active athletically. And the nomination was from a friend, just about what a great friend he is and how upbeat and positive he is and what he brings in terms of levity and joy to the classroom. So he nominated him for that, so congratulations to Jayden. Isabella Gary was nominated by Ms. Raitzer and shared that, Isabella had probably the toughest trombone part in operetta, but she gave it to her with confidence, and she said that this particular number was going to require lots of outside independent work. But she knew Isabella could handle it, and she shared that, she knows that Isabella can handle any type of musical piece that she puts in front of her, especially if it's going to require some extra work. So Isabella is a humble, quiet, and studious student, but really can step up when it's needed, so congratulations to Isabella. Ms. Bernardi was nominated by one of her students, and she had shared just how much Ms. Bernardi has kind of, kind of been like that fun aunt or older sister to her throughout her journey in high school. Always welcoming, upbeat, funny, really enjoys joking around with her, and she knows that when it comes to Ms. Bernardi, it's really all about this caring that she shows in a unique way as a teacher. So kids get very close with her, and she really has a great eye for all of her students and those in need. So congratulations to Ms. Bernardi. And Ms. McMaster was also recognized. Ms. McMaster looking very happy in that picture. That smile has been enormous this year with the upgrades of the library. It's been super exciting for her, and she's gone out of her way to make it a very student-friendly place, starting with efforts years ago with the Maker Space and making it not a quiet library anymore. So the library's constantly full with students in all sorts of different realms. A student that nominated her mentioned her welcoming presence as well as her mission to make the library a friendly place, a productive place. And she takes tremendous efforts in making it a technology, a technologically sound place, helping students with technology, printing, getting computers, helping them with different projects and such. And she's worked very well in the marriage with our technology department that's now housed in the library. She's open and welcoming to that partnership. So it's really become a tech hub and a wonderful space for learning for students, and she was nominated for those efforts. Congratulations to Ms. McMaster. Moving on to March. We had teacher Samantha J., or sorry, student Samantha J. in Mason LeVeere. Samantha J. is kind of the do-everything type of student at Amherst, very, very active in the school, and very meaningful efforts. She was one of the founding members of the Mental Health Awareness Committee. She's on the Women for Change Leadership Club. When she was, she was coming off the bus from that overnight in Seneca Falls when she was honored for this, and she was on her way to Rochester for Challenge to Change, I believe, the next day. So she's always super active in a number of efforts, inside and outside the building. She's also involved in some charitable efforts through her family as well. The CCC Award winner from the Attorney General, all-around super nice kid, high-achieving, very active athletically as well. She's active in the track program, and her track coach also mentioned what a great kid she is. So very worthy of this nomination. Congratulations, Samantha. Mason LeVeere, a super-strong academic student, very, very intelligent young man, quiet, studious, very active in the math league. One of the young men, the peer that nominated him, mentioned that how in the math league, he really can tackle all of those math league questions. He's the strongest, one of the strongest math league team members, and also a great fellow student cooperative. Many teachers have mentioned what a great student he is and how he contributes in the classroom. Congratulations to Mason. Mr. Thielman was nominated. This student had mentioned in his nomination just how helpful he is, what a kind and safe and nurturing classroom it is. She mentioned specifically the traits he provides to motivate the students, and she was very grateful for that, the nurturing and welcoming presence he is in the classroom, as well as recognizing their efforts. And they put in a lot of specific and targeted rigorous efforts in many of his honors classes. So congratulations to Mr. Thielman. A new face to Amherst, but not a new face to the district. Ms. Cagan, who was one of our teacher assistants, was nominated. And Ms. Cagan has become a very active member of our staff immediately, getting involved in student programs. She was out there in Lake Erie with 32-degree weather for the Special Olympics polar plunge and has really taken a care and eye for a number of our students. And that was recognized immediately. So she's been involved in making a difference for our students, so well-deserved and mistaked. So thank you for this opportunity to present our Students of the Month and Teachers of the Month for January 30th and March.
Thank you very much, Uncle Greg. We'll switch over to the next presentation, where you can provide the Board of Education with an update along with your assistants, Mr. Kathmann and Ms. Tidler.
All right, so again, another wonderful opportunity. We really relish this annually to share the great work going on. This, we've had themes the past few years. Some of them were related to the pandemic and some of the spiriting of morale that we wanted to have. So last year was back in a winter blast. Previous year, it was Amherst one. This year was connected. That was purposeful, because it was time to kind of reconnect as a faculty, reconnect students and peers, and move on from the pandemic, making human connections. Definitely following a lot of those pillars, or updated pillars from the strategic plan, and we're eager to take on and continue that wonderful work in the columns of Teaching and Learning Stud life and Amherst Pride. Part of that connection, being connected as a community, was purposeful. We spent a lot of time in our opening faculty days just connecting, debriefing, doing a lot of restorative type of circles and circle works, where teachers can just talk on a number of structured topics and really get to know each other, introduce our new faculty. So this was purposeful, and really part of our opening days was a lot of dialogue, a lot of group work, and a lot of reconnecting. To that realm, we're moving into Priority One in another great effort under our co-teaching models. Mr. Kathmann.
Thanks, Greg. So not intentional, but as occurs to me, I suppose, an appropriate segue, given my transition from special ed to the high school. To start off, under this priority, we have our ICT book club. And it's the second year of the ICT book club. We've been very fortunate to have the support of the district in expanding our integrated co-teaching program. And in addition to that, professional development for our integrated co-teaching model. We've had a very, very robust participation in the book study from our new ICT pairs. The focus of the book this year is on specially-designed instruction. And technically, that has to do with instruction that is focused on the individual needs of students with disabilities, but similar to the whole ICT model. It is professional development that really enhances teaching and learning for all students in the integrated setting. They're all benefiting from both the co-teaching model and, of course, from the professional development that we're investing in our integrated co-teaching pairs and especially our new integrated co-teaching pairs. Play it back. So as far as the book study goes, again, we've had good participation from our new ICT teachers, and we're hoping to continue the book study next year. It went by fast. It's only been four weeks that we've done over the course of four months, one meeting each month for four months. And actually, the teachers are a little disappointed it's come to an end, so that's great to hear. And that also dovetails well with our general district philosophy of, you know, diversity is an asset and a resource, diversity in terms of students with disabilities as well as more broadly. So we've got, we're fortunate to have the support of the district with that initiative. I guess, again, sort of appropriately flowing from that topic, we have made a concerted effort to sort of redefine the ISD process at the high school as so many things with the pandemic became a little more nebulous and less structured. Our ISD process also needed to be revisited and brushed up upon now that we're back in-person, in-person instruction occurring, really feeling as normal again, which is great. We have been focusing on developing an updated ISD handbook that sort of lays out formally what the process and protocols are for the instructional support team. And really with a focus on investing in interventions in Tier One and Tier Two within the building, at the building level. We talked a lot during the pandemic about Tier Three supports, Tier Two supports, especially related to things like the FSC and getting out in the community and figuring out how to support students during those really unprecedented, unique times. And coming back into the building, we're actually facing some old challenges, but in a new way. Student attendance, I wouldn't say is a significant problem for us, but it is more of a challenging concern, I think, than we've had in the past, because students are still getting used to being back in school consistently. So focusing on engaging students in the classroom, day to day, and what teachers can do in the building and what supports we can develop in the building to address problems in a new way has been a focus of the ISD.
Dr. Greg. Continuing, and I'll try, we'll try to cut down on the abbreviations, because I know that these are not always normal nomenclature. However, we continue our partnership with the Henry Ford Learning Institute. And our Career and Technical Education Department, which is our business in computer teachers, along with our art department and our technology department, are kind of into year three with Henry Ford. And we were unpacked, we're well beyond unpacking this now. We're putting it in action. And that's that innovative model that we've seen in the past, the design-thinking process, and really bringing it to life in classes and programmatically within STEM, STEAM, and the hybrid between our technology and our CTE department. We wanted to make sure it lived right away in all of those classes, so the departments worked together on a common lesson plan that was delivered to each and every classroom. And it was what they call a rapid-cycle design activity, where you, within a class period, take on a problem. The students here took on the problem of fantasizing about what type of vehicles they could create to get to school during a snowstorm. And there was all sorts of wild ideas, and that's the whole idea, to work through the model, brainstorm, and then develop prototypes and take it from there. So there was a fun activity in the fall, and literally hundreds of kids participated in all of those classes. At a more micro level and at a more advanced level, I'll have Mr. Curtis share a little bit more on what's going on in his technology classes at the advanced level.
In my robotics class, I posed the question, could you design a gate-led locking mechanism that we could test, prototype, and build for a picket fence? Well, we got an answer, and the answer is yes, it can be done. So let me show you how we get it. Mr. Curtis likes graphics. To answer the question, can Amherst students design, prototype, test, and build a product for sale? We use the design-thinking process learned in our training from the Henry Ford Learning Institute. This process uses a collaborative approach to designing. Students in our AIR, Advanced Innovation Robotics Class, have individually designed products in the past. But could they do it collaboratively within our class and with other departments? Steve Amherst and I have shared the same vision of the capstone class. We would use the We would use the design-thinking process and incorporate many other disciplines. We wanted this so we could use their expertise to create all aspects of the product, just like they do in industry. We started with research. Gate latches have already been created. We wanted to see how other designs looked, worked, and to see if we could improve upon it. We soon realized that there were many designs already out there, some good and some bad. Once research was completed, we moved into ideation. For this process, students were paired together to talk about their ideas. We used the framework that no idea was a bad idea, and students could give input without being negative. With their ideas in mind, students started sketching their version of what they believed would be the best solution and presented it to the class. Once presented and discussed, it was voted on to see what version the students would ultimately design in SolidWorks. This was the winning design. SolidWorks was used to design the parts. It was decided that the bolt and the locking pin would be threaded together to help with the assembly of the locking pin. There were five parts designed and created. The bracket, bolt, locking pin, spring, washer, and pin. Now that all parts had been created, it was now time to find out digitally if these parts and pieces would all fit together and react like they're supposed to. The MakerBot Replicator Plus was a 3D printer used to prototype and test our part designs. 3D printing is a vital component in the design-testing process because we find out very quickly if a design will work or not. This can be a quick process or a long process based on how big or small the parts actually are. Some parts will print in 10 minutes and others will take four hours. As soon as the parts came off the printers, they were tested and assembled to verify the design. Some needed to be redesigned and others worked fine. The parts you're seeing assembled in front of you are part of the color scheme schematics of two, three final prototyped designs of the gate latch locking design. Here is the final design, including the final color scheme of the gate latch locking mechanism. To help convey the product and explain how the design works, the team decided it was necessary to create a 3D animation of what the product looks like and how it works. The exploded view shows how the product comes apart and goes back together. Now let's hear a few words from our students.
The most enjoyable part of the project was the design process to me because it wasn't just one person's idea that went into the final product. It was a collaboration of multiple ideas and scrap designs that went into our final product.
The part that was the hardest to design was the bracket because you had to measure out the holes of which the bolt had to fit through and make sure that it slide, like the bolt would slide through without, like, getting caught up on the bracket.
The part that was the hardest to design was the bracket because it needed to be able to fit all the components into it while also not taking up too much space and for it to be a solid one-piece.
The hardest part to design was probably the bracket because we had to figure out how everything would come together because that was like the bed that the pillows and blankets and whatnot would go on.
The part that got the most attention, I would think, was the pin that you used to pull because it's the most, it's the part that you move the most rather than the bracket, I think. It's probably going to be screwed out or something. So you're going to need to move that. So you might want to work on that to make sure that whoever's holding on to it, no matter whether they have arthritis or have a smaller hand, any other hand injury, just to use it without having any limitations.
The most important part that we focused on was the bracket as all parts had to, we had to figure out how to make all the parts work with that bracket.
Absolutely. I would say probably the most ergonomically concentrated part of the gate latch was probably the pin that you used to pull it.
I think that 3D printing helped us just come up with a final design because we could design it on our computers and we could print it, go like, oh, this thread, this thread wouldn't work here, so let's make it bigger, let's make it smaller. Oh, this hole is too small, let's make it bigger. Yeah, and so on. So we could really, really, like, physically see what would be the most effective way to design this product.
I think that SolidWorks helped our design process because it allowed us to draft multiple different versions of our product and be able to make any changes in a short amount of time to it. And 3D printing helped as well for the same reasons because if we printed up something that was bad and were able to fix it in a matter of hours.
I would say SolidWorks and 3D printing are an absolute game changer when it comes to designing as opposed to like previous, previous softwares. I truly enjoy being able to see our prototype 3D on a screen and then being able to print it out and hold it in our hands, kind of see where our flaws are with it. It's definitely better than sending it straight into the manufacturer and having it go from there.
SolidWorks and 3D printing helped drastically because it allowed us to really see what we were making before it printed out rather than having to just print something out or even not be able to print it at all and just hoping that it looks right or hoping it works how it should work.
An assembly video, in my mind, was necessary because it shows the function of the gate latch that we made. And it shows just how it's supposed to work in the program and how it should work in real life.
I believe that an assembly video was necessary so that people will be able to see how it gets put together. And if this were an actual product and people needed to fix it, they could see the process of it going together.
I would have to say I'm very proud of the dedication of each student to work as a team to produce the best product they could. I've shown this prototype to many people and they're amazed that high school students designed, prototyped, and produced this product. I would have to say, job well done.
So very impressive work being done by the students. And they, they really learn a lot about actual industry-related processes. You hear the program SolidWorks mentioned a little bit. And that might be embedded in that, perhaps a plug, but more so a thank you to the Technology Department because SolidWorks is an industry software. It's not an education software. So it's tough to manage sometimes. And our tech folks have been wonderful in helping us use that real software. Next, I'll move on to Ms. Winslow.
I Advanced Innovation and Robotics Class, I posed the question.
Up with Mr. Curtis. There we go. Ms. Winslow has a little bit more to share about the design-thinking process in action.
Hi, my name is Tana Swinslow. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you a little bit about what we've been doing in our classrooms with Henry Ford Learning Institute and design thinking. In design communication for innovation, first, students define the problem. How might we design a new pattern for a utilitarian textile? Students engaged in empathy by researching what patterns were already in existence and what textiles were available. They looked for wallpaper and textile books to understand what patterns and textiles users were already waging with in their intricate lives. They shared with each other what patterns, shapes, and colors were interesting and inspiring to them. Students researched patterns on the internet and created mood boards that would focus their inspiration and set the visual mood for the pattern they would design. Students began to ideate possible solutions for their pattern using their mood boards to inform their process and Adobe Illustrator to facilitate their design iterations. Next, students engaged in peer feedback. They discussed what was going well with the design and wondered how scale, color, and line quality might enhance the visual effectiveness of the pattern. Students reflected on the feedback they received and considered how to modify their ideations before prototyping their pattern. Students used Adobe Illustrator to prototype their patterns using line, shape, and color. This was their introductory design challenge in using this particular software. Students gave and received feedback from their first iteration of their prototype. They reflected on that feedback and began a second iteration of their prototype using Adobe Illustrator. The online company Spoonflower provided the means to upload student pattern design files, select the textile, and send off to be printed on fabric. Students received a working prototype of their pattern design printed on the textile of their choice.
It was a great opportunity. You illustrated your big arms and your voice. So another example of how Design and Innovation is alive as well in Amherst. Just a lot of wonderful work and exciting work going on down there. Shifting gears a little bit.
Hi, my name is Tana Swinslow. Thank you.
There we go. You may or may not be familiar with our U B residency partnership, but these are year-long student teachers, Sana, Victoria, and Destiny, that have been doing wonderful work with our students. And it's a new program that we're looking to expand next year. It's K to 12 program, so it will be in other buildings as well. But these folks, besides learning, they do substitute for us as part of the model. So they really become partially student teachers and our employees. And they really have done beyond student teaching. Sana, you'll learn later in the presentation to the left, has started our Muslim Students Association, a club that was budding, but her leadership has taken it to a next level. And these students have done a lot of one-on-one work with students as well. So I see them in the cafeteria, meeting with students. So perhaps it's the age factor, but they really have gravitated and students have gravitated to them. So it's a wonderful program. And we'll be expanding our placements next year. And we've had tremendous teacher interest as well. Targeting it all to Ms. Kibler.
So one of the, one of the major and important parts about reconnecting is connecting with student love and bringing it back in action in the high school. We don't have masks, we don't have social distancing, so we can get the kids back together, doing fun kid activities, bringing in a little bit of competition, a little friendly competition at pep rallies, re-engaging in football, re-engaging in basketball, and bringing in these spring sports that are coming up, getting kids excited about being kids again and being back in school. So this is just a little friendly competition at our most recent pep rally to recognize our spring sports. We have a Challenge to Change Club that Mr. Pigeon mentioned earlier. Challenge to Change has been around for about 10 years now. The club really focuses on students interested in social injustices, biases, and racial prejudice towards others. We have a large group of students. They actually came back two weeks ago from Rock to Change. They drove out to Rochester, engaged with some of their peers from the region to just work on these social injustice issues. They played a large part in our Black History Month performance and celebration, coming up with activities like bringing in Esther Anan from the Yosai Foundation as a keynote speaker. They brought in Big Mama's Soul Food for an afternoon activity for some food and a little bit of entertainment. They showed a movie in the cafeteria. So they really played a part in getting students engaged back into the community, connecting with each other so that we could bring that theme of connection to the school year this year.
And part of these student groups is fun, unity, and the culture of our school. But they also serve a restorative nature as well. I leaned on these students when we had to navigate some pretty serious things post-OP strategy. And that was a tough time for the building. It's tough times for the students to process something like that. But our job is to channel and push forward in positive directions with students. But it always wasn't easy to be positive. But these, these leadership groups stepped up during that time. And the ideas and thought that came from our dialogues and our restorative circles was a show of unity and a show of honor for those victims. And we had a dub release. And that was all with Challenge to Change. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Patrick for a couple of feature items.
So I'll avoid calling it ESCR. I'm trying to avoid lapsing into acronyms again. The Seal of Civic Readiness. So this is the second year of the Seal of Civic Readiness. We were really out in front of this initiative last year in its first year, and it has grown this year. What the Seal of Civic Readiness is, is it's really an opportunity for students to demonstrate preparedness, to engage in the community, apply civic knowledge, skills, and engage in positive civic action. And they demonstrate that preparedness. There are a number of activities and sort of points they're required to earn in civic participation and civic knowledge. But it culminates in presentations about an area of research they did as far as service to the community for relevant issues that face either our local community or a little bit more broadly. Right there, we've got a picture down in the lower right. That's actually last year's cohort of 25 students with Mr. Lonzak. We have not had the presentations yet for this year. They'll come at the end of the year in June on the same day as the awards assembly. So we have last year's cohort of 25 here, 25 there. This year, we have over 60 students pursuing the Seal of Civic Readiness. And it is an additional seal that goes on their diplomas and a medal that they receive. But probably the neatest part of it is the projects and presentations that they prepare. And here we have some example topics from last year and some pictures from last year. Again, because we have not quite gotten to that point yet. We have two cohorts this year, a fall cohort and a spring cohort. They'll all present at the end of the year, but that's just based on when they take the government course that largely focuses on civic responsibility. So some of the topics from last year are hostile architecture and its impact on the homeless, critique of minimum flight hours required for pilots, COVID regulations, and professional sports. That is something that, of course, has been in the news. Taxpayer dollars in the Bill Stadium. Impact of fashion on the environment and supporting, pursuing women in the skilled trades, which, supporting students pursuing vocational work and skilled trades is something that's been an important shift and important focus. And of course, supporting women going into science, technology, education, that has been focused for a little while in education. And just really interesting and relevant topics that we have. There are some examples that students have presented. And then there are some of our students and some of our administrators. I think, I think Mr. Pinella's back there in the corner on the lower right, looking a year younger. And the ability to make positive difference in the public life of our communities through a combination of civic knowledge, skills, actions, minds, and experiences. That's right from the handbook, The Seal of Civic Readiness. The other seal is the Seal of Bilinguality. And this was kind of neat to hit the ground running with because these presentations just occurred. And this seal has to do with students demonstrating proficiency in an additional language beyond their native language. And we probably think initially, and it makes sense, of English as our native language and then world languages being what they would pursue for the Seal of Bilinguality. And that certainly was the case for the majority of the students. We have 40-plus students pursue the Seal of Bilinguality this year. But it also included sort of the flipped script of that with students who are English language learners and were proficient in a native language other than English and then demonstrated proficiency in English as part of their presentation, which was pretty neat to see. Here are a couple of our presenters. We had a member of the Ernst Clan present also. And in more than one language, actually. And then here is our ENL cohort of Seal of Bilinguality earners. And there's our list of languages. French, Spanish, and Latin are the three languages through French, Spanish, and Latin are the three languages through the World Languages Department that students demonstrated proficiency in through their presentations. And talking about culture, cuisine, history, and important historical figures. Those were some of the general topic areas that students may have chose to focus on, but there was a whole range. And not only did they present, they also had to engage in some Q and A with a fluent speaker of whatever language they were demonstrating their proficiency in, which was very impressive to see. And I do not speak any of these languages. I studied some Spanish and some Latin, so that helped me a little bit with making sense of what was going on with Spanish and Latin and even French, right? There's a little bit of lexicon there, but the languages of our ENL students, it was really impressive. It gave some perspective on just how challenging it is for those students coming to this country with a language that has little or nothing in common with the appearance of English and then learning that language as the language that they're receiving instruction in and demonstrating proficiency. So it's a very, very cool experience to be involved in the Seal of Byliteracy and similar to the Seal of Civic Readiness. We're, we're happy to have it growing and we'll continue with it next year.
To Kent.
In terms of continuing with Amber's pride and recognizing all of our students and what they do bring to the table, the diversity that we have within our community, we have noticed an increase in the population of Muslim students. And if you don't know, this is the month of Ramadan. It is a very important month for our students with a Muslim background. So thankfully, we have Sana, who is one of our U B teachers of residence. She worked with Asha and they created the Muslim Student Association this year to enlighten their peers, share with them what it is that their culture is all about, what it is to practice during the month of Ramadan. Asha was very brave and came to a faculty meeting, presented to all of the faculty about what they do during this month, how important it is, why it's important, share with them some of the concerns that teachers may encounter with students who are practicing Ramadan. In case you didn't know, they don't eat from sunup to sundown, so that presents a very large challenge for some of our students while their attention-